Welcome to the February 10th, 2025 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We have an invocation offered by Commissioner Coons, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we come to you humbly today, giving you thanks for yet another day of life, another day of living. We pray that you give us the strength to continue to walk courageously, but also humbly, continue to be open-minded, but also honest, continue to speak truth, but always understand that you don't always have possession of the truth and be willing to listen to others as well. Give us the strength to also look out for as many as we can who live in the city of Sandusky and make the very best decisions that we can make every time we come together. All of these things we ask in our Creator's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Fargo, here. Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bajali.
Here.
Mr. Coons.
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Crable?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? No objection, motion will be approved and Commissioner Crable is excused. Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of January the 27th, 2025? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner what?
I move that we accept the January 27th minutes as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved and those minutes are approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda item comment.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. I have four questions, a couple of them around the consent agenda. The first one is item A, which is a transfer or a new liquor license, if we can get that clarified. Item B is the 13,000 and change in capital project funds for the Osborne, I'm sorry, MacArthur Park project. The question I have, is there a certain account number that's coming out of? Is it Destination Sandusky Funds or exactly what fund is that coming out of as an account number? Number three item would be the item number four, which is the pickleball courts for Whitman-Weber. The question I have, because it didn't really specify in the supporting documents, is that court going to continue to function as an ice rink during the wintertime? This year, for the first time in quite a while, we've been able to use that for a couple of weeks with maybe a week or two left. So it's been a good winter this year as far as ice skating and there are a number of people using it. So if I can get that question answered, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Deal with those questions as legislation comes before us, hopefully. Any additional items on the agenda items?
Brian McCormick, 3009 West Monroe Street. I would like to bring to the commission's attention some ambiguity in the language in item five regarding the bus shelters that are going to be built. Specifically, they say located near Hayes and Pierce Street. Doesn't reflect which side of the street they're going to put that on because there are two stops at that intersection. Monroe and Huron Street. We have West Monroe, we have East Monroe. West Monroe Street has an intersection at Huron Street, but there is no bus stop there. The bus stop is two blocks away. I think this might have meant Huron Avenue, which has a bus stop there at the intersection of East Monroe and Huron Street. Remington and Rhodey Street, again, does not specify which side of the street they're going to put the shelter on. And Tiffin Avenue, that location, we have three bus stops along Tiffin Avenue. One by Bud's Place and Just Like Home Laundry. We have one at the intersection of West Monroe and Tiffin. And there's a third stop at Rokosh from Dick's Carryout. So I think we need to have language to specify exactly where those are going to go before voting takes place on this matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any additional comments regarding agenda items? Commissioners, do you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation? Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have five items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to a regular agenda? Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, new liquor license for Soul Venice LLC. Item B, approval of service contract with Ohio Edison for MacArthur Park Project Phase Two. Item C, approval of 2025 wastewater treatment plant sludge hauling. Item D, approval of Erie Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Cost Sharing. Item E, approval to accept two parcels into the land bank.
Commissioners, having heard this liquor license hearing and ordinances, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the approval of the ordinances under Section 14 of the City Charter, as well as approval of the motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Would note two things. The communication from our commission clerk indicates that it's a new license. And then the, and then item B regarding MacArthur Park indications, that comes out of the city's capital account. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the liquor license hearing and the ordinances.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That liquor license hearing and ordinances are approved. Ms. Myers, we present item number one, please, on the regular agenda.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring one Lucas, two chest compression system as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one Lucas, three chest compression system from Stryker Sales LLC of Chicago, Illinois, for the fire department and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for adoption of this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Not in any way to minimize the importance of the equipment, the safety and lifesaving equipment that our fire chief is recommending to us, but as an intermural matter, I want to tip my hat to him because I believe that in the almost 15 years that I've served on the commission, this is only the second time that the fire department has proposed spending more than Mr. Klein.
Congratulations. Mr. Klein, you can do better. Additional discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase 10 morning pride tails, turnout gear, fire coat and pants sets through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated of Southbury, Connecticut for use in the fire department and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Chief, I have a vague recollection of purchasing this turnout gear in years past. I'll date myself by saying how many years, but I do recall it was about $2,000 a suit. Now it is $4,100 a suit. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's gone up over the years, obviously, just like everything else. We usually purchase about eight to 10 sets a year, either for new hires or for replacements.
And my other recollection is that we donate some of the gear we're getting rid of to Yehovi, is that correct?
Yes, as it is 10 years older or more, we usually.
For training purposes.
Yeah, we usually donate to Yehovi so they can use it for training.
So we're not giving them gear to go fight fires, we're just giving them gear to have gear.
Correct. It's gear that we can't use because it's past the 10-year recommended lifespan.
Still a good use of it.
Yes.
Thank you. Additional discussion, Commissioner. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring one Life Pack 15 heart monitor is unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one Life Pack 15 heart monitor from Stryker Sales LLC of Chicago, Illinois, for the fire department and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Okay. I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Chief, what makes this product obsolete? The batteries run out or new technology? What?
They do give it a nine-year recommended lifespan. That's how long they guarantee the parts.
I got it.
And the repairs to it. So there currently is a new model out that just came out. This will be one of the last versions of the previous model that we're purchasing here tonight. Still comes with that nine-year part warranty and repair warranty, so it comes at slightly lesser cost than the newer version, too.
I'll bet the new one has a bigger price tag, sure. Thank you. Additional discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed pickleball courts at Whitman-Weber Park, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for adoption of this resolution under item four, under suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Well, I was going to say, I hope someone can address the question asked about whether this eliminates the existing ice skating rink that we have. I would hope that we would not put an ice skating rink on top of a brand-new surface like this. I don't think that we would, but assuming that that's the case, are there, is there consideration given to an alternative design for a very simple kind of ice skating rink that is only frozen when it freezes? If anybody knows the answer to that question. I'm not, I'm not, I'm going to support the development, but I would just like to make sure that there's an alternative in the works.
I can address that, Commissioner. Thank you very much for the question. We are waiting for a decision or some recommendations from the manufacturer about being able to freeze the skate rink or the, what is now a skate rink, once it is resurfaced for pickleball. If we are not able to, we are committed to looking for a solution for a real ice rink. As you know, we do have a synthetic rink right down on Jackson Street Pier, but at this time, we are waiting for the manufacturer to give us some guidance on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Item number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase of four bus shelters from Global Industrial of Port Washington, New York, through the Equalist Group Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Fargo.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Stacy, I see you in the back of the room. I wonder if you'd give us some specifics on locations? I think I saw, I think I saw a map of these, but I'm not sure that everyone got to see that.
Thank you, Commissioner, and to the public, thank you for the question. Yes, specifically, we're happy to promote four new transit waiting environments that will include bus shelters, specific locations. To answer the question on Hayes and Pierce, it'll be on the south side, closest to the address of 1823 Hayes Avenue, specifically to center around the new rec center project. The Tiffin Ave location, we previously had a bus shelter across the street from Dick's Carryout. Closest address to that is 1318 Tiffin Ave. We are relocating that bus shelter to that location. The third one is across the street from the Boys and Girls Club. Nearest location would be 1825 Remington Ave. And then the fourth is on the, heading south on the Blue Route, closest to Huron Park. That shelter will be located there.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy. I was pleased to see, it's my recollection, that these used to cost us around 12. When we were buying one at a time, they were about 12,000 bucks apiece. And obviously, buying four at a time, we're down to 10,000 bucks apiece.
Correct. And important to note that all secured funding for all purchases.
Great. Thank you.
And this, I'd like to also point out, would be our eighth transit waiting environment. When I first started, we had five total of 135 stops. Now we'll be closer to 12 to 13 after it's all said and done.
Excellent. Good work. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Brilliant Electric Signs Company, LTD of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Freedom's Echo Sandusky's Underground Row Road Legacy Signage Project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience and staff. I have a donation by Commissioner Brady for a seals that were, the city seals that are going on out at Lyons Park on the sign out there is $683.20. If I can get a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. If I can remember in the next 15 seconds to abstain from voting, I will do that, but oftentimes I forget to do that.
However, I will offer my thanks to Mr. Brady.
Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Abstain.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That motion is passed.
I have a whole slew of donations for Park and Rec. I'd like to thank For Love, With Love and Brett Sharville for their generous donations of $5,000 each to help fund this year's Midtown Supper Club Season Seven All Around the World program. The donations will be used for staffing and supplies. The award-winning program will be held on April 22nd at 5:30 at Mills Recreation Center. If we get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. I recall this gentleman Brett Sharville has made donations to this specific entity on several occasions, so we're not just thanking him for tonight, but we're thanking him for being there, for this opportunity for our young folks in that effort for many years now, several years now. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That motion is passed.
I'd like to thank Mark and Pat Cook for donating $5 and change from their Midtown Supper Club tickets back to the Sandusky Rec.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That motion is passed with our thanks to the Cooks.
The Friends of the Greenhouse donated an electric pressure washer for use by the greenhouse staff. The pressure washer is valued at $303.99. If we get a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That motion is passed. Ms. Myers, you are custodian for this commission of records. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
This came from the Bayfront Quarter Committee meeting. There was a gentleman who spoke about our website and he talked about, I thought he had some pretty good suggestions about having some of the projects that we have right now that are ongoing to actually post the timeline, tentative timelines for those projects and possibly maybe even post the benefits to the city if you can kind of place that within a context. Because there are some projects that we have right now that are ongoing and if people can actually see either a diagram or artist rendering of those projects and see them and say, wow, those things are coming, those look like they would really be beneficial for our city to have. I thought that he had an excellent idea. And then I noticed that when I went to the website, it looked like, I would take it, that Tom Horseman works, would be working on these kinds of things. I noticed an area that said current projects, but it said coming soon. So maybe he was already on top of that and just trying to decide what will be going on to the website. Looks like it, so.
Mr. Rosak, you have some comment regarding that?
Yes. The, Mr. Horseman's been working on, with our web designer, to have a project page on itself. He's been working on it for several months now. He has that concept from another website that we looked at that was very well done. So they're in the design, design phase of that project. As soon as we can get the web designer to get it instituted and on our page, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Thank you.
Coming soon.
Yeah, that's what's on here.
Additional items of new business, Commissioners? We'll move to audience participation on any item that pertains to city business. Please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your item that pertains to our city.
Hi, my name is Jessica Crowell, C-R-O-L-L. My address is 20, I got a big mouth, you don't need that. It's 2020, oh, I'm recording on that. 2027 Campbell Streets, Sandusky, Ohio. It's not, whether it's new business, old business, okay? What I was asking for and what I couldn't bring up last time is that I, we need a bus stop from Sandusky Transit to provide, I'm going to send these pictures around, to people that are coming to the bus stop that don't have rides and walkers and, okay? What I need, I'm going to read this because last time I messed up gan shingos. I'm not political. I'm just representing the church. No, but anyways, I'd like to thank everyone for the commissioners and the city leaders that will allow this to happen. I need the green light, not only me, the people of Sandusky need the green light. One Sunday of the month to provide these people with food, okay? I know there's a route on Perkins Ave. I've done, dealt with Mr. Stacy for a year, okay? It's in God's time, not my time, but it's political time. While he's shutting down the bus stops, let's do something for the people that were taking jobs from, sorry dude, I'm not going to hear you none, I'm just getting excited. But anyways, you know, that we're taking, you know, jobs from people, okay? Let's do the last Sunday of the month.
Items of new business. I have one housekeeping item here that I would request a motion to appoint our commission clerk, Kathy Myers, as records custodian for this commission.
So moved.
Second. And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
That motion is passed. Ms. Myers, you are custodian for this commission of records. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
This came from the Bayfront Quarter Committee meeting. There was a gentleman who spoke about our website, and he talked about, I thought he had some pretty good suggestions about having some of the projects that we have right now that are ongoing to actually post the timeline, tentative timelines for those projects, and possibly maybe even post the benefits to the city if you can kind of place that within a context. Because there are some projects that we have right now that are ongoing, and if people can actually see either a diagram or artist's rendering of those projects and see them and say, wow, those things are coming, those look like they would really be beneficial for our city to have. I thought that he had an excellent idea. And then I noticed that when I went to the website, it looked like, I would take it that Tom Horseman would be working on these kinds of things. I noticed an area that said "current projects," but it said "coming soon." So maybe he was already on top of that and just trying to decide what will be going on to the website. Looks like it, so.
Mr. Ozek, you have some comment regarding that?
Yes. The, Mr. Horseman's been working on, with our web designer, to have a project page on itself. He's been working on it for several months now. He has that concept from another website that we looked at that was very well done. So they're in the design, design phase of that project. As soon as we can get the web designer to get it instituted and on our page, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Thank you.
Coming soon.
Yeah, that's what's on here.
Additional items of new business, Commissioners? We've moved to audience participation on any item that pertains to city business. Please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your item that pertains to our city.
Hi, my name is Jessica Crowell, C-R-O-L-L. My address is 20, I got a big mouth. You don't need that. It's 2027, oh, I recorded on that. 2027 Campbell Streets, Sandusky, Ohio. And it's not, right, you're in new business, old business? Okay. What I was asking for, and what I couldn't bring up last time, is that we need a bus stop from Sandusky Transit to provide, I'm sending these pictures around, to people that are coming to the bus stop that don't have rides, and walkers, and, okay. What I need, I'm gonna read this, 'cause last time I messed up God's shoulders. I'm not, I'm political. I'm just representing the church. No. But anyways, I'd like to thank everyone for the commissioners and the city leaders that will allow this to happen. I need the green line. Not only me, the people of Sandusky need the green line. One Sunday of the month to provide these people with food. Okay? I know there's a route on Perkins Ave. I've done, dealt with Mr. Stacy for a year. Okay? It's in God's time, not my time, but it's political time. Why he shut, shutting down the bus stops? Let's do something for the people that were taking jobs from, sorry dude, I'm not gonna hit you on that, I'm just getting excited. But anyways, you know, that were taking, you know, jobs from people. Okay? Let's do the last Sunday of the month. Have the bus out on Perkins Ave. I don't know about the rec center. I talked to Tundra. I don't know about all them. I don't, I'm not saying I don't care, 'cause I do, 'cause I love the kids, you know? But Monday through Friday, we have grief lessons. We have Friday, every Friday, we give away free produce. I mean, there's, and then we, as the church, will provide money for these people to get there, to get the grants, to take from the money that they, I'm not about money, okay? I'm not. I just know there's a need, and it needs to be brought to the city because it's, nothing else is being done. We give, and we give more than we ever should, and we can consolidate this. Sorry. Oh, God, I'm nervous again. But anyways, we can consolidate all this stuff, you know? Tip for tat, he took jobs. We can bring jobs. I know the green line has never ran on Sunday, but can I have the last Sunday of the month? Can you put the bus stop Monday through Friday for the grief sessions that people go? 'Cause you don't know all that people have gone through, you know? For alcoholics and addicts, for the least of these, for the people that can't walk. They can take that bus stop and call and say, hey, Sunday, I need to go there between 3:00 and 4:00 of the last Sunday of the month. You know? I mean, I don't know what else to do. I've prayed, I've tried, I've talked, I've walked. This is where I am now, okay? And I don't know where God's gonna lead me, but this is gonna happen. It's got to happen. These people in walkers and bicycles in the snow, do you know you can't carry what we give you? And we can't ask the, sorry, Mike and all that, you know, we can't ask them to, their insurance and everything to perform, you know, to perform for them. I don't know what Pastor Tony's going on, and he told me I represent the church, and I'll do that all too good sometimes because I'm me, and God loves me, but I love people. And to see this hurts me. And if I can do something about it, I won't stop until it's done. You know, I was in a motorcycle accident. My mother told me, I'm not trying to keep everybody bound up. She told me, you may not be able to do what you used to do, but you do what you know you can do, and that's trust in God and never give up. And I won't give up. I cried every, I had to walk away from the food giveaway because I see these people, God rest one of the girl souls that came up in a wheelchair just to get food. And all I needed was a little bit of, yeah, we can open up the line. I don't do it on Sunday. It's all about money. No, it's about the people. It's about the city of Sandusky, and that's what we need. I'm not here to ask, never mind, okay? I pray to God, and I pray to God every single day. And it's not about who I am, but it's whose I am. And I'm a child, God, and I'm here for my city, and I'm sorry. I don't, all right, I'm done. Two checkers.
Thank you.
And don't record that one. Okay? Now what do we do?
Thank you for your comments, and staff is listening to you, and they will, you know, they will respond to you.
Okay. So I gotta go home and wait for something?
Yeah, now, this is not meant to be a debate, and it's not meant to be a question after.
No, I don't know what I'm doing here. All I'm asking is the city to help.
Well, the commission's heard, and our city manager's heard, and our transit director's heard your voice, so I will expect them to respond to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
You did a good, you did a good job.
Is this, I said I'm a good time last time, and poor Mr. Pajali was like, okay, do you want, what do you want? And I'm like, I'm breathing.
I was confused.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Additional, additional items pertaining to city business?
Hi there. My name's Mike Waddle, and I've been living in this town for, I don't know, 17 years or so.